Fourth floor of this building in conference rooms three oh nine B and three thirty seven. Should anyone wish to seek support during or immediately after this morning's meeting? Now I want to call for applause for a moment of silence to acknowledge the three students who were lost that night to their families, friends, and the Spartan community. Brian Frazier, Alexandria Werner, and Ariel Anderson. Thank you, and let us keep in our hearts the five students who are hospitalized and who face, in some cases, profound continued health struggles. We also recognize the significant effect this violence has had on so many other, directly and indirectly, students, faculty, staff, alumni, family, and our community. I know many experience ongoing stress and trauma. Grief is a profoundly personal process. As we work through our own feelings in our own timeframes, we can be here for one another, drawn together as Spartans. I want to thank those present in that terrible moment who bravely responded to aid our students and this campus, and to the police dispatchers and other first responders who responded to the call. The university has moved promptly to enhance safety and security while balancing our role as a very public place. These actions include changes in facility access, door locks, and our security camera network. We adopted a more robust leadership structure for our Department of Police and Public Safety, separating the role of Vice President from the Chief of Police. Most recently, we contracted with a specialist firm to conduct an outside after-action review of the university's response. And we created an office for resource and support coordination to better support the students and families directed affected, as well as the larger university community. And we're working out how to best provide active violence training to students and employees. Our university community responded very quickly also to begin the healing and recovering from our collective trauma. The provost's office worked with colleges to ease students' immediate academic burdens where possible. I'm grateful to the faculty members and academic staff who modified their classes to support their students. Undergraduates were offered the option to take this semester's courses on a credit no-credit basis. The arts, too, have stepped into the breach to facilitate healing among our campus community. The Wharton Center offered free tickets to students for several performances and programs. And the lovely paper butterfly exhibit installed last month at the International Center also became a place of healing. We will observe moments of silence at our spring graduation ceremonies, and will confer on Brian, Alexandria, and Ariel honorary MSU degrees, certifying their enduring membership in the Spartan family. Now I want to highlight examples of excellence in our academic and athletic programs, discuss sustainability and RVSM actions we have taken, and conclude with some words about MSU's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am very much looking forward to our commencement ceremonies in just two weeks. We have a wonderful slate of honorary degree recipients addressing graduates at our three commencement programs. Jill Ruby is undersecretary for Nuclear Security for the U.S. Department of Energy and administrator of the National Nuclear Security Administration. Dr. Anthony Fauci is the former chief medical advisor to the president and past director of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases. And our own professor Lisa Cook is a noted economist and the first Black woman to serve on the Federal Reserve Board of Governors. As we bid goodbye to some ninety-five-hundred spring graduates at all levels, we said hello last Saturday to several thousand admitted students visiting campus with their families. I love playing the role of recruiter-in-chief and meeting families of incoming and prospective students at Admitted Students Day. Of course, it's hard to compete with Tom Izzo in the recruiting game, but it is fun to share the floor with him at the Breslin Center pep rally before the Spartan football kickoff. Kudos to our MSU debate program, which sent teams to the national debate tournament for the twenty-seventh consecutive year. One of their squads advanced to the Sweet Sixteen round to record MSU's best showing there since 2017. We also celebrated our fifty-third Goldwater Scholar this season with the selection of Honors College junior Victoria Fox for this nationally competitive program. The Goldwater Scholarship Program seeks sophomores and juniors committed to STEM career with intellectual intensity, and Toria is pursuing a major in neuroscience. And congratulations to the twenty-five exceptional undergraduate and graduate students and alumni selected for the National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowship Program, along with eight honorable mentions. This is the country's oldest graduate fellowship program, supporting those in NSF-sponsored STEM disciplines pursuing research-based masters and doctoral degrees. Great students need and deserve great instructors and mentors. And I think it's important to highlight the world-class teaching that supports our students. I was thrilled to present Environmental Engineering Professor Susan Mastin with this year's President's Teaching Award. Her exceptional service extends beyond the classroom to communities in Michigan and beyond. We make these presentations fun every year by surprising the faculty member during one of their classes and including their students. And what a season Coach Izzo and his student athletes had, ultimately stepping out of the big dance in the East Regional semifinal game with a Sweet Sixteen overtime thriller. We had a couple of seniors placed very highly this season on the other side of the basketball as referees in the NIRS A championship series for collegiate recreational sports in Maryland. Accounting major Seth Summers placed in the top twenty, among officials, and finance major Jack O'Brien ranked in the top nine, earning him NIRS A All-American honors. Congratulations, too, to the women of Spartan Gymnastics, who capped their season with a third-place finish at the NCAA Regional Final earlier this month. In their second consecutive appearance in the regional final, they tied their fourth-best overall score in program history. We saw another milestone set this month with head baseball coach Jake Boss Jr.'s four-hundredth win at MSU. I'm sorry he couldn't be at Old College Field for that home stand, but flooding moved the game to Jackson Field, and we are grateful to the Lansing Lugnuts for opening it up to us. We welcomed new head coach to Spartan Athletics Robin Frelick, who grew up in this community and is the Women's Basketball Program's sixth head coach. She comes to us from Bowling Green, where she built a winning program for the Falcons. And while we celebrate academic achievement as the semester winds down, I want to say how wonderful it was this month to participate in our annual Academic Excellence Gala. We saluted three hundred and fifty high-performing student athletes who excelled both on the field of competition and in the classroom. Tomorrow is Earth Day. Today, I remember how MSU professor George Wallace inspired and informed Rachel Carson's nineteen-sixty-two environmental blockbuster, Silent Spring, with his investigation of pesticide impacts on bird life here in our own community. In that spirit, I would note that over five hundred of our tenure-track faculty today are engaged in sustainability research. And we aim to practice what we preach as a university by cutting our greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent from our twenty-ten baseline, as the twenty-thirty strategic plan specifies. Along those lines, MSU's work to replace our infrastructure with more energy-efficient equipment and fixtures paid a bonus to us recently with the largest green rebate yet from Consumers Energy. Installation last year of a new efficient boiler at the power plant, new lighting, and other campus upgrades merited rebates of one-point-five-million dollars this year from consumers. Those emissions improvements alone are calculated to equal the impact of removing one-thousand-one-hundred vehicles from our roads annually. To help us reach our sustainability goals, I'm very pleased to welcome Chip Amone as MSU's new Director of Sustainability and thank Melissa Wu for her leadership in this domain. He was recommended following his selection in an inclusive search process, and I look forward to working with Chip as we continue our long-running work to be Spartan Green. Another important position we are close to filling is that of the Vice President for Civil Rights and Title IX Education and Compliance. Our search committee, which includes undergraduate and graduate students, hosted the two finalists for public presentations last week, and I look forward to being able to announce a final selection. The work to improve approaches to prevention and response to relationship violence and sexual misconduct is never-ending. I am proud of our progress in addressing the more than one-hundred-and-fifty requirements asked of MSU in our consent agreements with federal agencies. Since 2019, we have added thirty-five staff positions to the Center for Survivors, Counseling and Psychiatric Services, Police and Public Safety, the Office for Civil Rights and Title IX Education and Compliance, and the Office of Audit, Risk, and Compliance. We've conducted two No More Campus surveys focused on the culture, perceptions, and policies associated with sexual misconduct. And we created the Center for Survivors Crisis Chat to support survivors, their friends, and family. We gained momentum in 2020 when MSU launched the Sexual Assault Healthcare Program with free twenty-four-seven first-response medical care to survivors, the first such program we are aware of on any college campus. We updated RVSM and Title IX policies, including clear definitions of prohibited conduct in alignment with community expectations and Title IX. We established a victim center, trauma-informed interview space for law enforcement. And we established the Climate Response Unit in the Prevention, Outreach, and Engagement Department. Progress continued in 2021 when MSU created the MSUPD Community Support Bureau, including the Special Victims and Community Care Units, led by Deputy Chief Andrea Munford, and a police social worker was also added in 2022. We updated our policy to allow revocation of emeritus status, which has allowed for revocation from several faculty members, and we amended the faculty handbook to allow revocation of honors and awards in case of misconduct. We launched an undergraduate student advisory council with PO, and we expanded the campus sexual assault response team. Last year, we piloted a twenty-four-hour sexual assault advocacy response program for our campus neighborhoods. We updated the discipline and dismissal for tenured faculty for cause policy to outline a standard timeline and add transparency and consistency. We launched the Support More Initiative to provide guidance for how to responsibly respond to disclosures. And we expanded MSU Safe Place staff with federal funding. We also completed two rounds of Coz and O'Connor reports recognizing continued investment in resources toward Title IX and Relied Compliance. Now we are developing new professional standards policy with academic governance to outline expectations for faculty and academic staff. We are creating trainings for academic unit administrators, and we are exploring faculty hiring policies requiring candidates to disclose misconduct investigations. These are in tandem with our federal Title IX regulations and those recommendations in the QE report. I am happy with our progress but not satisfied, and look forward to continuing with all of you MSU's journey towards responsible conduct and aligned policy. Policies and procedures are just one part of our work. Conduct becoming a great university and discernment and applications of those policies in the best interests of the students and whose interests we serve is our ongoing duty. Another ongoing way we are working to make MSU a safe and welcoming place is our recognition throughout the year of months-long honoring our diverse communities. Last month, our Asian-Pacific American Student Organization celebrated its fortieth anniversary at the Wharton Center. This month, MSU continues APIDA Heritage Month to recognize our Asian-Pacific Islander Desi-American community and its multicultural diversity. The month's events culminate tomorrow with a banquet sponsored by Apso and APIDA, which also recognizes this year's attending graduates. Congratulations to all. And it was good to read Vice President and Chief Diversity Officer Jabbar Bennett's annual DEI report that the two-hundred-and-seventy-plus action items from the DEI Steering Report and Plan are complete or in progress. We also have a new honor to acknowledge and celebrate in this area. Trustee Sandy Pierce was named a Michigan Diversity Council 2023 Woman of the Year Awardee for her leadership in helping many rise in resilience. Congratulations, Trustee Pierce. We will make the university's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion a literally concrete reality when we come together later today to break ground on MSU's first freestanding multicultural center. I hope everyone can join us at the corner of Farm and Shaw Lanes for this ceremony. This comes just a day after we celebrated the ribbon-cutting for the expansion of our School of Packaging facility. We are also proud of our top-ranked packaging program and grateful to the donors and stakeholders who partnered with us to support this expansion. I want to conclude with some thank yous to several of our students and faculty representatives to the Board of Trustees. First, to Joe Kovach and Belle Lecher for their leadership on behalf of MSU's nearly forty thousand undergraduate students and its fifteen thousand students living on campus this academic year. Thank you so much for your leadership. And to our faculty representatives Karen Kelly Blake and Stephanie Anthony, who are leaving their academic governing positions this year. Thank you for your service to your fellow faculty members and to the board and to me. I wish all of you the best for what comes next. And with that report of consequential actions over the last two months, let us return to our agenda. I now call upon Vice President for Research and Innovation Doug Gage for the Gift, Grant, and Contract Report.
Good morning, Chairperson Ambassador, members of the Board of Trustees. I request approval of the awards found in the Gift, Grant, and Contract Report. The report period is January twelfth, twenty-twenty-three through March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. The total value for this period is one-hundred-and-thirteen-million-two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the Gift, Grant, and Contract Report? Is there a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The Gift, Grant, and Contract Report is approved. I now call upon Vice President for Research and Innovation Doug Gage to introduce the research presentation for this meeting.
Thank you. It's our tradition in April to celebrate student success, and today we are pleased to have a graduate student research presentation. Megan Hill is currently a fourth-year PhD student in the lab of Teheo Kim, based out of the Institute for Quantitative Health Sciences and Engineering. Her research is focused on developing new nanoparticle delivery systems that can be used for early diagnosis and treatment of brain cancer. Megan came to our attention after she recently placed first in the MSU Three-Minute Thesis Competition, and she competed at the Midwest Regional Three-Minute Competition in Chicago. Before attending MSU, Megan Hill completed internships with the Los Alamos National Laboratory and the National Center for Genome Resources. That's pretty diverse background. In August of 2019, she joined the Biomedical Engineering Department at Michigan State University to pursue her PhD. The College of Engineering at MSU awarded her a Dissertation Completion Fellowship for the Spring 2023, and her planned defense date is January twenty-four with her expected graduation in May of twenty-four. After graduation, she plans to join the pharmaceutical industry in hopes of developing new medical technologies that can be translated into the clinic. Her full bio is in your packet, so please welcome Megan Hill.
Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Gage, and thank you to the board for having me here today. I'm going to talk to you about the research that we've been doing on engineered nanoparticles for effective brain cancer detection and treatment. So the type of brain cancer that we're focusing on is known as glioblastoma. It's a very invasive and aggressive form of brain cancer, normally diagnosed within stage four, and has a five-year survival rate of less than seven percent. Now, these cancers tend to form mostly within the frontal and the temporal lobe regions, as we can see here with MRI and PET scans with enhanced contrast of a tumor formed within the temporal lobe region. And this can actually make these tumors very difficult to diagnose and treat. But one of the new things that medical researchers have been looking into is the use of nanoparticles to both help early diagnose and treat these types of cancers. Nanoparticles themselves range in sizes between one and one-hundred nanometers, which, to put into perspective, is about a thousand times smaller than a single strand of hair. And so the type of nanoparticles that we're focusing on are known as Prussian Blue nanoparticles. So they were first developed accidentally in around seventeen oh six when an artist was mixing together two different types of rocks and blood, which we assume came from some sort of animal, trying to create a red paint, and accidentally end up coming up with a blue pigment instead, which we now know today as Prussian Blue. Prussian Blue, as we can see here, comes as a powder form, but this powder is actually composed of many, many hundreds of millions nanoparticles. And it was actually used to create this painting here off to the left. It's still a commonly-used dye and paint to this day, but as of two thousand and three, it was actually FDA-approved for heavy metal toxicity removal within the body for thallium and cesium. But these Prussian Blue nanoparticles actually have a wide variety of other medical applications, including enhancing MRI contrast, which is our common diagnosis agent for brain cancers, enhancing photoacoustic imaging and photothermal therapy applications, which is the primary focus of our research. They can be hollowed out to allow for passive loading of common chemotherapeutic drugs for targeted drug delivery purposes. They can also be used to reduce local inflammation of tumors. There we go. So what we're focusing on is applying these Prussian Blue nanoparticles for brain cancer. So the primary reason that these types of nanoparticles, or I guess, type of brain cancers are so deadly is what we know as the blood-brain barrier. So the blood-brain barrier is kind of a layer of cells surrounding your brain that prevents a lot of nasty toxins or pathogens from entering in and causing all sorts of havoc, while letting in essential nutrients. While it also prevents a lot of common chemotherapeutics, diagnostic agents, or in this case even Prussian Blue nanoparticles from entering your brain and allowing us to diagnose or treat these types of tumors. Well, we have developed a new cloaking mechanism by using U-87-derived exosomes, which essentially are glioblastoma-derived vesicles that are commonly used for cellular communication within the body. And using mechanical force, we've created hybrid particles that can naturally pass through the blood-brain barrier and into the tumor site, allowing us to not only get early detection, but hopefully localized treatment of the tumor. And so hopefully, our overall goal is that by injection of these particles within the body, probably through IV, and then exposure to a laser within the brain, we can actually not only see early diagnosis, but hopefully local therapeutic effect within the brain utilizing heat. So the first part that we focus on with these particles is that we can see through the development, we have exosomes that are naturally hollow structures, Prussian Blue nanoparticles that are naturally cubic in shape, that through mechanical force can create these more spherical-type particles that through single-particle analysis, we can see that in red, we have a Prussian Blue core based on the iron signal, and then in green, we have a nice exosome layer. And so for our cell-based applications, we want to make sure that because these are hybrid particles, they contain both the innate properties of an exosome as well as a Prussian Blue nanoparticle. So exosomes themselves tend to have fairly high uptake patterns within cells because they are biologically derived. And we can see here that with our fluorescently-stamed hybrid particles, they have about the same high fluorescent intensity as our native exosomes do, indicating we still have that same cellular uptake efficiency. And then on the flip side, with our Prussian Blue nanoparticles, when they're exposed to laser light, they can cause localized heat within a specific region that can cause localized cell death. And what we can see here is that with our laser, we have no indication of cell death, indicating the laser is causing nothing. But with our particles added into the mixture and then exposed to a laser, we see that we have specific cell death within the exposed region, indicating our particles are not only very good at localized treatment, but when not exposed to a laser are very biocompatible. So the exciting part of this presentation is that we're looking into in vivo diagnostics and treatment. So initially, using a subcutaneous mouse model, which we can see here, which is essentially where we inject the cells into the flank of a mouse to induce a tumor model, we can see that before treatment, we have nice, large tumor signal. But after treatment with our particles and laser, we virtually have no tumor signal left, indicating we have really nice localized therapy using our particles. And then on the diagnostic side, we can actually see that, as a reminder, when we inject these particles through the tail vein into a mouse, we're hoping that they're going to localize within the tumor region within the brain. And we can see that our particles should naturally be passing through the blood-brain barrier and into the tumor site. And we can validate this using photoacoustic imaging, which is also based on that laser application, where what we see here in green is our Prussian Blue signal localized within the tumor area, overlaid with an extreme blood signal, which is very exciting. And then finally, for tumor identification, we can see that our particles specifically can target the tumor region, while not the rest of the brain, which can be very helpful during tumor resection during surgery as it can help identify infiltrating tumor tissue within a healthy brain. And so to wrap up, we've developed a new hybrid particle that contains both innate Prussian Blue and exosome properties and also has direct targeting of brain tumors as well as local therapeutic effect. And our next steps actually include partnering with Henry Ford Hospital to implement photothermal treatment within the brain. We're hoping to enhance photoacoustic and MRI contrast, hopefully for earlier detection, and as well as hopefully applying this technology to a wide variety of cancers by just changing the type of exosome that we're using. And with that, I would like to thank everybody a part of my lab, especially my PI, Dr. Teheo Kim, for making this research possible, and as well as the Institute for Quantitative Health Science and Engineering here at Michigan State, with all of the nice lab resources that we've been allowed to use, including the photoacoustic instrument that we've been using in the imaging core. And with that, thank you.
Megan, thank you for that really remarkable presentation. May I call upon the board for comments or questions?
Well, I'm a... Yes, I'd like to say.
Trustee Scott.
Um, I was just whispering to Trustee Vassar. I had a very close friend who was in law enforcement in Muskegon, who passed away several years ago from Gio... I gotta pronounce it. Glioblastoma. Thank you. The work that you're doing is incredible. I get very excited when I hear these types of things happening, especially here at MSU. I recall when I first became a trustee, I don't even think we really... We were just starting the bioengineering type of work here at the university and how excited I was at that time, and to see students such as you doing such innovative work is absolutely exciting to me. Go Green. I am so excited for this because to be able to develop something, and it happens here at MSU, that would be absolutely remarkable. So congratulations on the great work you and your team are doing. Continue to just excel. I'm excited for the work you're doing and what you're going to do in the future.
Thank you so much.
And that's really my question. Congratulations on being ABD. Just make sure you finish. Because we, you know, so when you're done, what are you going to do?
Stay here.
What's next?
I'm hoping to join the pharmaceutical industry in hopes of applying this technology, hopefully into translation into the clinic, which will be exciting.
So the one huge commendation I have for you is that you are speaking in a language that most of us do not understand, but you made it so understandable, which actually speaks to your understanding of it. Because if you can teach it to, you know, someone who's an English major, you're doing a great job. You actually know this stuff. And so kudos to Dr. Kim and to the rest of your faculty who really have given you a sound foundation that you're able to speak to us and we can understand what you're talking about means that you know this.
Thank you.
And you got it.
Yeah.
Very good. Well, Megan, thank you very much again for this wonderful presentation. Thank you. I now call upon Interim Provost Yaitzko to present the personnel actions and information reports. I now call upon Interim Provost Yatsko to present the Personnel Actions and Information Reports.
Thank you, Interim President. Trustees, I present for your approval the items on the April twenty-twenty-three list of Personnel Actions. I present for approval the following tenure faculty appointments. Danielle K. Brown, PhD, Associate Professor, School of Journalism, with tenure effective August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. David M. Markowitz, PhD, Associate Professor, College of Communications Arts and Sciences, with tenure effective August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Olaruzian O. Ogwobi, PhD, MSU, Barnett Rosenberg Professor, Department of Biochemistry and Molecular Biology, with tenure effective August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. I'm also pleased to recommend Douglas Freeman Jr., DVM, MS, and PhD for the appointment of Interim Dean, College of Veterinary Medicine, effective April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Dr. Freeman brings the strong leadership background that is needed for this role, and I look forward to supporting his leadership in the interim period. The action includes the recommendation of Robin Frelick, head coach, Women's Basketball, Department of Intercollegiate Athletics, subject to contract effective April fourth, twenty-twenty-three to June thirty, twenty-twenty-nine.